Okay, welcome everybody to the August 2nd regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance and after that we'll have a moment of silence. Everyone please stand. Okay, just a word, Commissioner Best is out of town on a previously scheduled commitment and Commissioner Rogers is on the phone. Brandon, are you there?
Hey, I'm here but I can barely hear you.
Okay. Okay, we'll get the staff back here to help you out. Okay, our next order of business are public hearings but we have none today and then after that is the next order of business is public comment session. I have some folks signed up to speak. Please allow yourselves three minutes and there'll be a buzzer go off when your three minutes is up. If you would, just finish your thought, I'm not going to cut you off hard and fast, but if you would just finish up your thoughts and then we can move on to the next speaker. So, and like I say, it's three minutes and I'm just taking these in the order that was presented to me and that's the buzzer. Cut you off. Yeah. I'm kind of like Steve Harvey, you know, that's the buzzer, you know, you get your 20 seconds. You hear that sound, you have, please finish up your thought. So, our first speaker is Kay Miller. Welcome Kay.
Thank you for this opportunity. When I first arrived and I noticed that those of us who choose liberty are seated in a separate area from those who maybe feel differently, that was, that was kind of taking me back to the, I'm old enough to remember when there were white only water fountains, but I digress. Thank you for letting me be here and I'm here to speak for liberty so, and I'm making my own medical decisions. Last week, the Haywood County School Board voted unanimously, that means party affiliation didn't matter, for liberty and the well-being of schoolchildren. So you may say, "Public health concern, we've got to do this." And I say, "The studies are coming out that show the antibodies of those who have chosen not to get inoculated are lasting and preventing them from getting sick from any, like the Indian variant of this Wuhan virus." And besides that, there are cures, so if you're, and again, it's liberty and if someone wants to get inoculated, that should be their choice. But I also think masks should be a choice. And where I was going to go with that on the medical side is that we can't get the drugs that will save people, hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin. People are having to go out of the country, go online to consult with doctors. My own personal physician laughed at me when I asked if he prescribed ivermectin. So, I just want to really make sure that I underscore that we like liberty and I'm going to sound like a broken record. And this is, the masks, the not masks, the inoculated, the not inoculated is divisive. This right here is divisive and it's like I told folks at the school board meeting last week, united we stand and divided we fall. And so, all of the measures that are being taken to divide us, I'm not for that. So, if you want to get, keep people from getting sick and you're thinking, "Okay, we've got to do this because too many people are getting sick, our hospital beds are getting full," which I have from at least a couple of people who work at the hospital saying that it's a staffing issue, not a bed issue, but if people do get sick, and they will, I say ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine. Thank you.
Thank you Kay. Appreciate you making effort to be here this morning. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Stephanie Bell. Welcome Stephanie.
Hi guys, thanks for having me. My name is Stephanie Bell. I'm just here to advocate for our constitutional rights. It says right in the Constitution that we have the right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness in our Declaration of Independence. And liberty means I have the right to choose my health decisions. I have a right to make those decisions for myself. I am opposed to forced vaccinations. I'm opposed to putting a mask on my face because it does not work. It has been proven that the molecule size is small enough to go into the mask. People are getting sick with or without the mask. I think it's a violation of my rights to tell me that I have to wear one, that my children have to wear one, that we have to be vaxxed, that I have to have a passport to go to the grocery store. Is this America that I'm living in? I'm a little lost. I refuse to have people, other people, make my health decisions for me. Those are my rights, not anyone else's. Masking my children, we took care of that last week. I just wanted to remind you guys that y'all are a board of elected officials and you work for the people. Most of the people do not like the government getting mixed into our health concerns. Right now, I'd like to go ahead and suggest that you go and research who funds the CDC. It's not by we the people. I didn't elect one person that works for the CDC. Those people are funded by Bill Gates, they're funded by Pfizer and Moderna, and then we wonder why they're pushing their vaccines on us. So, once you do a little research and you find out exactly what this has become, it's become political. They are, they have a pandemic and they are against we the people. And the more we continue to capitulate and give away our freedom, the more that we become less American. I'm American. Are you guys American? Thank you for your time.
Thank you Ms. Bell. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Melissa Shipman. Welcome Ms. Shipman.
Hey guys and thank you for your time. I just wanted to stand up here today to let you know that no matter your public party affiliation, we should have a choice in whether we want to wear a mask. I understand that there's a lot of people here today that are very concerned about this virus that is here and they have a choice whether or not they want to put a mask on their face, but y'all want to force the ones that don't want to wear a mask to put a mask on their face and that's not okay. The China virus is here because it was planned and that's what it is, a planned virus. And we shouldn't step down and have to wear something that we don't want to wear. It's our health and if we choose to not wear a mask, then that's what should be.
Thank you for your comments. Our next person to sign up to speak is Mary Beth Cochran. Welcome.
Good morning. Let me first start off with this, no one puts baby in a corner. Right there is a violation of our rights and I won't be segregated. We were told unmasked had to sit back there. That's wrong. It's not going to continue to happen. My name is Mary Beth Cochran and I'm raising grandkids in the Bethel School District. These are my own thoughts and feelings on the pandemic. We as a society are failing our kids miserably. Not only have our kids been robbed of their proper education, but their beginning foundations for learning have been altered forever. Some kids may never get that back or be able to reach their own full potential because of this pandemic. It's not only alarming, but so sad to think because these children, these children here are our future. My grandson has ADHD and other issues. He couldn't stay still during the virtual destruction that was going on. Because of that, he had 29 absences for the first weeks of school. He used to be so outgoing and hug everybody and with this pandemic, he has turned and gone into a shell. We need for our voices to be heard. We are advocating for our kids. They need to get back to normalcy as possible. If masks are mandated again, I will pull my kids out of school and will peacefully protest, march, or sue whoever I have to for my child's rights being violated. If Governor Cooper can ease the mask restriction for the Coca-Cola 600, for 50,000-plus fans to rub elbows with no masks, our kids should be allowed to go to school. They should be laughing and smiling and enjoying life. These kids are reverting and pulling away from us and their mental well-being and health is being destroyed. Our Haywood County mental system, there isn't one. It's unreal. Please know, the same snakes that are selling the pandemic are also selling the cure. Please keep our children in your thoughts and let them go maskless. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person to sign up to speak is Myrna Campbell. Welcome Myrna.
I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with you today and I want to say that I'm here as a concerned citizen, not to represent a political party or group. First of all, I want to commend you for your decision that you made about masking. I believe you are acting in the best interest of the county employees and the general public. One of the most disturbing things about attending the school board meeting last week was hearing so many parents say that masks are not effective. Sadly, many speakers in the meeting expressed the feeling that masks do not prevent infection, but I wouldn't be standing before you today if I had not been protected by a mask. Even during the height of the pandemic shutdown that started in March 2020, I've regularly gone to the grocery store three to four times a week and I feel certain that if I hadn't been vigilant about wearing a mask, I would have been infected at some point. I haven't even had a cold and what about the flu? Anybody here reports of the flu outbreak this past year? Many people have criticized the Center for Disease Control for putting out conflicting messages, but I feel as though they've practiced situational management. A friend of mine has compared it to building an airplane while it's in flight. You don't know exactly how it's going to operate, so you deal with issues as they arise and make your adjustments so the plane doesn't crash and burn. If you don't take preventative action, and the plane probably would crash and burn. Due to significant increased spread in our county driven by the Delta variant, you all have reassessed our situation. The Delta variant presents new challenges because it's about twice as infectious as the original strain of the virus. There are also new data suggesting a small portion of vaccinated people can become infected and transmit the infection. A common claim made by those who oppose masks, as you've heard this morning, and oppose vaccine, is that government mandates take away their liberty and personal freedom. They say, "It's my body, my choice." I disagree. It's about being humane and practicing brotherly love, the responsibility that we have for the well-being of others. It's what the Bible teaches us about loving your neighbor as yourself. Again, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning. I applaud your actions and I hope you continue to monitor situations, conditions, and make your decisions according to the facts and the situation at the time.
Okay, thank you Myrna. Our next person to sign up to speak is Mary Ann Widenhouse. Welcome Mary Ann.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I wanted to follow up a little bit about when I was here when Tabitha Bradford from Appalachian and Dr. Buckner from Meridian and Shelley Foreman from VIA did a presentation. And having been involved as a CFAC member for a number of years, I understand that there are a lot of robust mental health services here. Part of the challenge is how much access do people with, who are uninsured or underinsured have to those services? And Tabitha said that night, they may not have as many options. I was in a meeting with somebody from the ACT team, the Assertive Community Treatment Team, which is a 24/7 wraparound service for people with the most significant behavioral health challenges. And I asked her, "How many people do you serve and how many out of that do you have as uninsured or underinsured?" She said, "We serve up to 90 people. We only allow 10 who are uninsured or underinsured." And so, that concerns me a little bit. I don't know how to work with that, but it might be something to look at, how many services are open for those who do not have the insurance to pay for those. But one of the bright spots is something I've been involved in for quite a long period of time since the beginning and that is Recovery Education Center. Dr. Buckner talked about that, I believe. And it's one of the services here that does accept anybody, no matter how much they have to pay. And it's, as I said, one of the bright spots back in 2002 when the mental health system changed and Smoky Mountain became a local management entity. The state plan said that recovery and peer services were going to be the norm. Am I almost finished? Out here, I was part of the very first class of peer support specialists and helped develop the Recovery Education Center. It was not an easy task because people out here were not focused on recovery and using peers and it took us a long time to get everybody on board. And it's exciting for me to see how far we've come in the Recovery Education Center. This book was my class manual and it comes from Meta Services out in Phoenix, Arizona. Now again, this is almost 20 years old. Meta, Dr. Kim Franklin from Smoky Mountain gathered a group and we went out to Meta and looked at what their services are, the recovery-focused and peer-run services out there. I was privileged to be able to be the only peer to be invited to go out there and I saw what they did and how they managed their recovery services using peers. So, I just wanted to share that with you. It's a light in our, in our community and I'm very grateful to have been a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you Mary Ann. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Paul Taylor. Welcome Mr. Taylor.
Thank you for seeing me. I'm the adjutant of chapter 89, Disabled American Veterans, and we would wish to thank you for your past support and to let you know that we are continuing to serve our veterans in the community as well as active duty members who happen to be passing through. Within about a year ago or so, we had a family who was transiting from the west coast to the east coast and had their vehicle break down and we were able to help them out by giving them a room and food for the time and also help them with their vehicle repair work. And because of the pandemic, our ability to do fundraisers dropped down considerably. We have had one just recently with reasonable results and we just would like you to continue to consider us with a donation. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Taylor. Appreciate you being here today. Okay, that's all that I have signed up to speak. Would anyone else like to address the board this morning? Okay, come on. Just state your name and maybe where you're from. Welcome.
Hey, good morning. Thank you for listening to me. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that a couple of other folks have said. I mean, clearly, our government was put in place, the purpose of it was, was not to enforce the will of the majority, but to protect the rights of the individual. And so, I think that's, that's a key and I think what the lady over there said, that reinforces that we need, we need the ability to make our own choices, so we need the freedom of choice regarding the masks. The fact that she was able to wear the mask and she feels that protected her, she should still have the right to be able to do that and at the same time, we as, those of us who believe that the masks do not help and are not good for our health, we should have the opportunity to make that choice for ourselves as well. So I wanted to reinforce that, but the other thing I think we're not talking about is that we also have freedom of religion. And so, and I think to me, and what I personally believe, is that we all need to put on the armor of God and that's a personal choice. And I think God will protect us. God protects us from, from, definitely from disease, but he also protects us from the rulers and the tyranny that's trying to come down upon us. And I think, I think we all need to be able to put on that armor of God and again, that's a religious belief, but that is part of what our Constitution and the Bill of Rights has guaranteed us as well. So I, I just feel like that's another aspect of this that we have to consider and when we force these masks onto people, we're not just violating their individual liberties, but part of those individual liberties that are being violated is their freedom of religion as well. So, I just wanted to add that on as well. Thank you.
What was your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tom Durbin.
Okay.
Thank you.
We just got to put that in the record. Okay, would anyone else like to address the board this morning? Okay, yeah, come on up. Just state your name and where you're from lady.
I'm not a public speaker, so if my voice wavers a little bit, it's, it's liable to do that. I've sat here through a couple of these things and I think we're past the mask thing. I think we're into the field of encroaching on our civil liberties. Once we start allowing these things to happen, a little bit more will be taken and a little bit more will be taken. We've been seeing this go on for a year and a half now. As a father and a grandfather that has, both sides of my grandparents, on both sides of my parents were, have been here since the beginning. The same, the same land that my grandparents worked, I work now. And I doubt very seriously that my grandfather would put up with much of this. To the lady over here that feels like she's been safe with her mask, my family has not been sick, we haven't had a cold, we haven't worn a mask from day one. And I just want you to know, most people in Haywood County, we're not going to comply. We're not. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Conan Ford.
Okay, it's okay. Okay, would anyone else like to address the board? I'll close the public comment, we'll move on to constituent concerns. David, you had a parts and wreck matter you wanted to talk about right quick?
Hope everybody's having a good Monday so far. I just wanted to give you an update on our park master plan that we did this back in April, we had that approved to go back and read up our master plan. The master plan was originally approved in 2007, so it was time for an update. And part of that update is that we are conducting a survey. This morning, the survey will be on our website, we will also email that out to our media partners as well too. But what this will help us do, it'll help us go and work with grants. You know, this evening, or this, excuse me, a little bit later in the morning, this morning's meeting, we also hear about our Greenway, our grant funding that we got for the Greenway. And so, having those, this master plan helps go and get more grants and more things that we can do for our citizens here to broaden our recreation programs here as well too. So again, that'll be posted to our county website, we'll email that link. The survey takes less than 10 minutes. We'll also be conducting two public hearings, not as part of the county commissioners meeting, but two public hearings where people can come and give input as well as to those that can come and talk about what they think that might, the future of Haywood County Recreation should look like. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I know last time we had to have, we had hearings at different locations or not necessarily hearings at the, is that what's happening this time?
Yeah, we'll have one in Waynesville, one in Canton.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have one in this building and one at the municipal building in the town of Canton. And I'll let you know when we get those dates organized and situated for that time.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
And we are focusing more on outdoor recreation, I guess.
I'm sorry, sir.
Kind of one of our themes is to focus on outdoor recreation.
Yeah, and yeah, you know, you'll see when you get into the survey, it'll ask you various questions about what you think's important in recreation, you know, going Smoky Mountains, the rivers, kayaking, bicycling, mountain biking, all those are, all those aspects are in there as well too. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then as far as, Brian, you just want to go over the, why we're doing the masks now, kind of what happened and to transpire that.
Sure.
We're just asking people if they would.
Sure. And Dr. Jaben and Ms. Henderson are here to fill in the details. In my mind, there's, there's really three things. One is, is the safety of our employees. Our vaccination rate sort of mimics the county, we're about 45% vaccinated, so we know that those that are unvaccinated in the county are, need to be masked up, so regardless of situation, we're following the CDC guidelines. Keep in mind, we had, we always have a request of more positions than we are able to fund in the budget. This year, we had a request of 23 positions, we only filled 10. Our departments are stretched pretty thin. If, if employees are out with this for an extended period of time, two weeks or longer, it really impacts service delivery. So we can't serve the public if we aren't healthy. If we don't have telecommunicators or EMS or people to record your deed, the services we provide will have an impact. So, wearing masks will allow the virus not to spread in county departments hopefully, or minimizes it and then we're able to provide service to the public. The other thing is, a lot of folks don't realize, we're self-insured. If we get sick, the bill doesn't just magically go to Edna or Blue Cross, it actually goes up to the fourth floor and gets paid by finance. We have a very expensive health plan and if we can minimize costs by wearing masks, it saves tax dollars. But for the, the details of the virus and Delta, turn to them.
Did y'all want to make any comments?
Morning, Dr. Jaben. You may remember the pot of boiling water from last year. I walked out the door and forgot the pot this morning because the pot is boiling over. We've seen in the county, a marked increase in cases over the last two, three weeks. I will remind you that about a month ago, we actually had a week of no new cases. This past week, it was up to 94. Previous week was 46, 94. And we haven't seen the numbers from this weekend, but a preliminary look at that would say that there's nothing suggesting it's going down yet. It will go down at some point, we just don't know how far it's going to go and how, how wide it's going to get. Test positivity in the county a month ago was 0.2%. Today it's 6.8%. 5% is the improvement. 5% is the important threshold. When you get above 5%, it not only indicates increasing spread, it also indicates that you may not be testing enough, which would indicate that perhaps what's being reported is lower than what is actually out there. I think we've all had the opportunity to relax a bit over the first part of the summer, and that's been good. But I believe it's time to pivot. And if you were concerned last November, you should be just as concerned right now. The numbers are looking the same as then. And in fact, cases are rising at a steeper level now than at that time. So back then, we didn't know it was coming, but I think at this point, we all know what it can be and where we might very well be headed. I'm hopeful that this will peak soon and then go down, but as of right now, there's no indication that that's about to happen. Sarah, do you want to add anything? Oh, I think there's the other thing I think is important to say. In the last two weeks of the roughly 115 or 120 new cases that we are aware of, 97% of those have been amongst people not vaccinated. The hospital today has nine patients admitted with COVID, seven of those not vaccinated, two of those are vaccinated. So people who have been vaccinated are definitely getting sick. It's a very small percentage, and those people are having milder symptoms. If you're familiar with what happened at Spice Wood Long-Term Care Facility, they had a memory unit that the infection got in there. I think of the 14 residents, all of whom were vaccinated, 11 of them tested positive. One of them went to the hospital. And if you compare that to the experience with Silver Bluff at this time last year, where roughly 90 of 105 got infected and a third of those died, that should tell you, be an endorsement for what the vaccine can do. I think that's all. Happy to answer any questions.
Question, anybody got any question?
Okay. I'll take the pot.
Okay. Okay, did you have anything you want to make?
No, I don't really have any. I had a few calls about the fact of the mask, and I just want to make sure the public's not misinformed. The masks are just while you're in county buildings. There's no mask mandate for people to wear masks in the county. It's just when you're inside the county buildings. And Bryant pointed out all the issues and the reasons we made that decision. The last thing I wanted to do is I put on another mask. I'm sick of them, too, just like everybody else. But the fact of the matter is, if you look at the statistics, it points to the fact that it is spreading and there are more cases. And the only way to at least curb it, you can't stop it with the mask. I mean, people think that the masks completely prevent it, but they do not. But they certainly can curb it some, and whether you believe that or not, you know, it is what it is. But the fact of the matter is that we have to protect our employees, we have to protect the funds that are required to pay for our employees' insurance. And guess what? If we have to pay for 10 or 15 people to go to the hospital, employees for COVID, that's coming out of our budget. And if our budget increases, then our taxes increase. So we're trying to protect all of the people of the county as well by doing that. Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, the mask mandate doesn't apply next door to the Justice Center. That will be decided by Raleigh or if they give that power to the Superior Court Judge. But right now, masks are not required because Raleigh controls that building.
Anything, Tommy, you want to?
I think Commissioner Kirkpatrick summed it up very well as it came to me Friday from our county manager. He explained all the details. And again, I want to reiterate what he just articulated. There's some misinformation in the community. The mask mandate is, just as he said, it's for our county employees' safety, it's just for the county buildings. And again, we're strapped with the budgetary items. And I work with a guy that's, many of you probably know him if I was to mention his name, but he got COVID. He's in a rehab facility. They're basically having to retrain him how to do everything. Millions of dollars in medical bills, not hundreds of thousands, but millions. He had SARS a few years ago, he had some respiratory issues, and then he got COVID. And we thought we were going to, at work, we thought he was going to have a funeral about three times. But the Lord brought him out of it. He's on the road to recovery. But as Mr. Kirkpatrick said, we are self-insured, and we have to protect the taxpayers in the county, our tax rate, everything is one big ball of wax. And I appreciate the gentleman's comments about religious freedom. My wife and I were on vacation, couldn't help but think of a little sarcasm while he was talking. I'm big on religious freedom. We were in another state, and there were some folks went by. It was 96 degrees, okay? It was 96 degrees. I was miserable. I was wondering, why did I come to this place? I should have stayed in the mountains. And there was some folks came walking by, and they had long-sleeved shirts on, a full scarf, ladies were fully covered. And I told my wife, I said, what in the world is, what's going on with those folks? And she said, honey, calm down. It's their religious beliefs. They belong to religion where the ladies covered their face, and they covered their nose and mouth, and they did that before COVID ever came around. So I thought, well, you know, that's their right. That's their religious rights. If they want to get out in 96-degree heat and dress like they're ready for Alaska, that's their right. And I'm for that. You want to do that? I'm great with that. I'm big on religious freedom. Sat down in a place to eat, the lady came and served us. She had a mask on. She said, I hope I'm not offending you if I've got a mask on. And I said, well, no, ma'am. You want to wear a mask, wear one. I said, I hope I'm not offending you because I don't have one on. I said, if I am, I've got one in the truck. I'll be glad to step out there and put a mask on if I'm offending you. She said, no, I've got a medical condition, and doctors require, recommended I wear a mask. But again, to reiterate, this thing we did is just to protect our county employees and try to stave off some long-term cases with medical, you know, medical cases that would really reflect back on our budget. And we want to take care of our employees and take care of the fiduciary responsibility of our taxpayers, so.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. And I'll say, too, it's weird, but when COVID first came around, you'd hear about people, you know, here and there and today. I know, I guess this variant is more contagious. I was talking to my wife over the weekend, and she was telling me, now I've got family and friends that are having to deal with COVID. And used to, it was just like somebody who knew somebody that knew somebody that I knew had it. And now it's like family members, and it's like if one got it, the whole family got it. So, but I've got some cousins, and they live down, and they had all, their whole family ended up with it. So anyway, so it is contagious, very contagious. Brandon, did you want to say anything? Are you there?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah. Brandon, did you want to say anything?
No, I don't have anything to say. I mean, you guys summed it up best. I did have a couple of other constituent concerns, and I got with Mr. Morehead, and we've taken care of those.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Just tell me if you need to say anything, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I also wanted to thank, I know Tracy, Tracy's back with us, her clerk, and we appreciate Tracy being back. We've been praying for you. And I do want to recognize Amy for filling in for Tracy and really Tracy and Candy. Candy had left our community because of, she had to move, so, or she did move down toward to family. So, but I appreciate Amy filling in during that time and having to learn the job, hit the ground running, if you will. So I appreciate you being very professional, Amy, and doing a really excellent job. We appreciate that. And welcome back, Tracy. Good to have you back. Okay, our next order of business is administrative agency reports and presentations. I haven't forgotten anything, have I?
I don't think so.
Okay. And Bryant, we've got new full-time employees?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have quite a few to announce today. This is through July 7th. At the sheriff's office, we have Jesse Mies and Matthew Ralph, Animal Control. We have Douglas Savitt, Health and Human Services, Judith Hickox, Sarah Walker, Sarah Messer, David Strum, Sarah Smith, Louz Remose, Tony McClure, Brandy Caldwell. Sean Waite in Development Services. Development Services and Inspections, we have Nathan Carver. And at the library, Rachel Adams. Those are our new employees.
Okay, appreciate that. Appreciate HR. I know it's hard to find employees right now. So it sounds like you're doing a good job of getting folks in there. Okay, our next order of business is discussion adjustment to agenda, and I do not have anything. Does anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda that they asked? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda?
I do have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
This expense we're going to have to incur for moving this fiber because of the DOT project, it's pretty substantial. Is the DOT not want to help us out with that? Have, I mean?
No.
I figured that'd be your answer, but I may not have a lot of heartburn about this. I mean, it's our fiber.
We've actually talked about it for two years, and we delayed it last year because we didn't have to do it. So this is the quote, and it's required. Everything is based on that. Our hands are tied. Joey's actually here, he can speak to the details of it, but there's no way around it, and it's significant. It's expensive.
Then the dental project was something that was put off. We voted on that a year ago. Due to COVID, we're having to do it now.
Correct, yes, sir. And those were Medicaid Max funds that had, went back into our coffers that are paying for it. Those Medicaid dollars are the ones that we receive from the state based on services that we provide, so.
Any other questions?
I thought the bid on the Dodge Chargers come in under $30,000 apiece, that was pretty impressive, so it sounds like that was a good competitive bid on that.
Speak to that, I want to thank Chris Boyd and Mr. Smiley because they were able to track down 21 vehicles, and we're going to get those ordered ahead of when we usually do. We expect some delays for the 22 vehicles, so we were able to get model year 21s at last year's price. So it came under what we had expected, and we'll have them much sooner than later. So that's great, and we'll save maintenance costs.
Yeah, thank you.
Because we're getting rid of some old vehicles.
It's good that you're getting them, too, because a lot of, you go by dealerships, and there's no cars on the lot, no new cars. So that's great that you were able to get that. Appreciate the staff staying on top of it.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
There, Brandon?
Yep, aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda, and the first item is the Land of Sky Regional Council agreement to develop a feasibility study for Haywood County Greenway Master Plan. And David Francis is their program administrator. And is Eric here? Welcome, Eric. Eric Karone. I won't let you pronounce your last name. Okay. Chair of the Haywood County Greenway Advisory Council and Elizabeth Teague, Development Services Director.
Good morning, again, commissioners. I'm going to let Eric and Elizabeth describe the grant, and then I'll come and do some of the financial cleanup after that. Okay, thank you. How are you, Elizabeth?
Fine, thanks. Good morning.
Morning.
I am Elizabeth Teague. I'm the Planning Director for the Town of Waynesville. But today, I come to you as your Vice Chair for the Haywood County Greenways Council. And with me is Eric Romanison of Haywood Waterways, and he is our Chair. And we're asking for your consideration today to enter into an agreement with Land of Sky Regional Council to help us do a study and feasibility study for a countywide Greenway plan. Several years ago, your Greenways Council recognized that lots of the municipalities had greenways in planning stages, and that there was some opportunity here, particularly with Chestnut Mountain and your recreation plan, to do some sort of strategic thinking about linking municipalities, linking parks, and looking at regional Greenway opportunities. At the same time, Land of Sky Regional Council was doing a master plan for the whole region, looking at Marshall in Madison County to Asheville, Black Mountain to Asheville, Hendersonville, all the way up to Asheville and Asheville West. The, this is called the Hellbender Program, and we want Haywood County to be able to be part of that regional planning, as well as look at the opportunities we have here locally. Eric can tell you the specifics about the grant and how we've worked over the last couple of years to leverage some funding to bring in grant money to Haywood County. Thanks.
Thanks, Elizabeth. So funding, we're very happy to report that we have full funding for this project. Our original estimate was about $130,000 to create a nice, well-rounded plan. And we have $10,000 in donations from local governments. That's sitting in Haywood Waterways restricted account, ready to use. We have a $30,000 grant from the Haywood TDA. Thankfully, they gave us that back in 2018, and thankfully, they were able to keep it held for us until we got the money from the French Broad MPO. And that's where that $10,000 and $30,000 really came in handy, is to secure $90,000 from that fund. So we have $130,000 right now. And our first steps, we're looking at a one-year timeline. That's the MPO contract. So we have to work pretty fast. Our next steps are to create a scope of work and request for proposal all within the next month. And if you all approve, put it in front of you all to approve it before we put it out to secure a contractor. And if all goes according to plan, we'll have this contractor ready to go by December 1st. Give them about six months to create a draft plan for the council to review come May 1st, and the grant would end June 30th. So give them, the contractor, two months. Give you all two months to review and the contractor to make updates in that time period. So it's a great project. I'm very happy to, the report to the council is, we're all very excited to actually have a solid project that we'll be working on.
Anybody having questions?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate you all working on that. I think that the greenways are great, and they're utilized. I go places to actually utilize other people's greenways that have those to ride my bike or walk or whatever. And then Eric, also, I want to appreciate, I get the emails regularly for Haywood Waterways and appreciate your work with that, too, as well, because people don't realize, I mean, we have great water here, but it can get contaminated. I've kayaked down Richland Creek and found that, you know, there's a lot more in there than what I'd like to see. And you do, you and your group, do the best you can to keep those clean, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You did all that. I have noticed that. Y'all just had a recent on Allen's Creek, didn't you, a trash pickup?
We do have regular cleanups regularly scheduled, and I think the Allen's Creek is coming August 7th. My coworker Christine O'Brien organizes all those, so I can't keep up with her.
Okay, so August 7th, you're going to have a pickup, a trash pickup? And then where will you meet to do that and what time, that way we can get the word out?
I believe, I usually meet in the Walmart parking lot, I believe. But I'll direct people to our Facebook and website for those details. I'm not 100% sure.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I guess we vote to approve the agreement.
Just make sure that everybody understands. So what we're approving today is the $90,000 for the grant that was received from the federal, the DOT, to the Land of Sky, and also the $22,500 match, as Eric alluded to, that's being paid for by the TDA. Those funds will come through the county to be paid out to the vendor. The Land of Sky will make a periodic request for that match to be paid, and we'll be paying and we'll be paying the Land of Sky back for that. So the TDA will give a check to the county shortly, and then we'll have to have a budget amendment to recognize this project at that time. So that's the two things that I just want to make sure everybody's aware of.
And these monies will facilitate the master plan for the county greenway system. And thanks, Mr. Robinson said, we'll have a couple months to review that after it's submitted back to us.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
We will have time to review that master plan after the vendor submits that back.
We plan to send you the scope of work, request for proposal, and master plan. Keep you informed on every step of the way.
I noticed on some of the paperwork, this, some of these dates on the paperwork go back to 2015 and 2016. So this has kind of been in the works for quite some time. And I saw where Nathan Ramsey over at the Land of Sky Regional Commission signed the grant money, the $90,000. So, and that is in the French Broad River Basin, I think that was kind of some of the criteria that...
Yes, sir. So Haywood County and a lot of our area falls under the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is housed at Land of Sky Regional Council. And Nathan Ramsey, who's the Chair of the Regional Council, is the supervisor for the F, we call it the French Broad MPO. What they do is help organize locally planning initiatives to pull down federal and state transportation dollars. So the source of these funds are actually federal highway funds that are given to each MPO for planning. What we hope is, once we go through this study, we'll have several areas that may actually be ready to turn around for preliminary engineering and construction of actual trail in the ground.
And later on, the agenda too is the selection committee for that. It's for this committee to review the vendors for this.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one, correct? The agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Brandon. Item two, we'll move to item two, and I appreciate y'all being here this morning. Item two is to request approval to accept the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan for Haywood Public Transit in order to fulfill obligations of the 5307 Urban Transit Contract between Haywood County and Mountain Projects. And we have Siya Simmons here this morning from Haywood Public Transit, and Christian Owen, our Finance Director, to speak to this. Welcome, Si.
Good morning.
Thanks for coming out this morning.
I think it's important to understand that we've always operated under a safety plan, federally mandated safety plan, that this safety plan that I present to you today is just specifically to the urban route that you just began operating July the 1st. So it's always dangerous to come up here and brag about safety, but we have had a safety plan in place for 20-something years, and we are very proactive with our safety and training and supervision. So what's before you today is a safety plan that addresses the urban route specifically.
Do you have any comments? Okay, go ahead, Kurt.
Yeah, I didn't have any. I had a, not necessarily about the safety portion of it, but how's the use of the transportation system? And I mean, I see it drive by my office daily multiple times, and I'm just curious how many participants we had in it.
I can get you specific numbers, but we're about 67% of where we were pre-COVID. So I'll email you with what we call our OP-SATS report. But we're real pleased with our numbers, and we probably have, on the average, 25, 30 individuals that ride the East and West Bus every single day. So, but that's off the top of my head. I'll get you specific numbers.
All right. I don't have to. I just want to make sure that people know about it, and it's being utilized and promoted. I think more people use it, the more they know about it.
Right, we do our best to promote it. There are some steps that we're ready to implement that, you know, hopefully we'll get the word out there a little bit better. But we're constantly promoting our route and, you know, encouraging the public to ride it.
If someone wants to find out about a specific route and the times that the buses show up there, where would they go to find that?
Our website is the best source, that www.haywoodpublictransit.org. And it's also on our Mountain Projects website. And I've got brochures and maps, and, you know, we've got them in different beauty shops and barber shops in different locations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll put some in your office.
Yeah, if you'll put some in my office. I don't know how many people use it to go to my office, but I would promote it.
That'd be great. We would appreciate it.
Well, I had a question, and it left me, of the people that ride it. Oh, the people that do ride the transit, what, do you like, get a feel of, do they not have vehicles? Do they do it for, ride it for work or shopping, or? I was just kind of curious.
Well, the biggest majority of our riders are employee, employees looking for transportation from their location. It's important to remember that this urban route is a walk-to route. We have specific, we have about 20 stops on the east and the west side. So it's an able-bodied transportation system. Although we do have a pair transit component to this, so if somebody lives within 3/4 of a mile of this route, then we can send a door-to-door vehicle to them, and they still pay that $1 amount. So there's no discrimination whatsoever, you know, as far as a person's ability to walk to these locations if they live within that 3/4 of a mile corridor of this urban route.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve item two of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Say aye, Brandon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. I think I'm technically supposed to check with you. Okay, item three of the regular agenda is the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Agreement for the 2021 Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Program.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Happy to report that this is our third grant that we have received from Department of Environmental Quality for, to add recycling carts to our municipalities. Back in 2014, then again in 2016, we did Maggie Valley, Clyde, and Canton. We wrote one, I want to give particularly credit to Zandra. This is her baby now, and she wrote the grant. We have a county contributes a match to it of $25,000. We've received a grant for $30,000. And Zandra went out there and found another $72,000 to help the town out with this, because it's an expensive item for the town. One of the things that the town, after we got this grant, they decided to go ahead and get carts for their waste as well. So they'll have a waste and recycling cart as well, too. So they're, they've gone all in, glad to help out where we can with their municipalities and the towns being able to get these carts. Because each time we've added these carts to municipalities, we've seen an increase in recycling and reduction in contamination. Recently, the county moved our end provider in recycling, and we showed a significant increase for the, for the lack of contamination in our recycling. And so it's a good, these programs really help in our getting the word out about cleaning up the waste, taking plastic bags out of the waste. That's what these carts really do, because it makes single stream. You don't put a bag in the carts. It's just open. The bags are eliminated. And this is, I think, let's see, we're giving them a number here. I'm going to say about 234,000 bags a year for the town of Waynesville. And that helps the residents. These carts are given to the residents free of charge.
So we don't have to buy plastic bags anymore? Yeah, that'd be good.
Just dump it right in there. It's all good, yeah. Yeah, so, so some of the logistics about, I've been asked about the, what's going to happen on Main Street, the pickup there. I don't know those particulars yet, but I'll be glad to report back when they tell me what's going on with that as well, too. But the town of Waynesville will reimburse us for the largest part of this. My apologies for not getting the MOU done sooner with that. Would also ask that you allow the county manager to sign that MOU for the reimbursable. We've done that on the previous grants as well, too.
Are there any strings attached other than the match?
Yep.
No other strings attached?
Yep. What, we assist the towns. We do the publication or what goes into the cart to let people know what's allowable to be. We take care of all that, Mr. Long, and then help the town, we'll help the towns get the carts put together, but we don't do all the deployment. But we make sure that they get the right messaging out. We'll work on their Facebook and their press releases when the time comes as well, too. And that's, we've done that in the past for the other municipalities.
And then the carts now, so the carts, they just put the recyclables in there. They don't put a bag or anything in them.
No.
And I know when we, Michael Sarles and I visited Lawrence, Kansas at that recycling center, and that's what Lawrence, Kansas did, and they basically, and you're right, it does cut down on contamination.
Yeah, because it's, you know, it's just, when you start thinking about it, because you got a plastic bag that doesn't get, it becomes waste. And so this is what helps with the single stream. That's why we've, you know, been pushing this for the, you know, the last five years. And we're also going to create another push to go there. We were going to, on the recycling side, we were going to get back into the school system this year, but, you know, with everything changing here in the last few weeks, we're going to pause on that to see, you know, what we can do there, so.
Anybody have any other questions?
No, I appreciate David working over this, on this, all these years. I mean, he's been consistent, I mean, for years and years and years about solid waste and recycling. And people don't realize how important it is. We kind of dismiss it because it's trash, but trash is one of the main things we deal with here with the county, and one of the most significant costs that we have, and also one of the most significant risks to our environment. You know, the folks come in here and talk about COVID, and COVID's an issue we'll deal with and hopefully we'll put past us. But trash is something we'll have from here on out unless we have some other way to deal with it. And we continue to contaminate our natural resources, and they won't be here. And so I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
It's a great team that we have in solid waste to get, you know, these grants available to us. And the DEQ has been very acceptable and very helpful to us in the past.
Give Zandra a big pat on the back for digging out that $72,000.
That was a nice find. That was a very nice find, because the town was a little hesitant about this. We went and spoke to them about it, and then they got on board, so it's been very nice.
I'm going down next week to the North Carolina Association County Commissioners Conference, and Halifax County has an innovative, I guess, alternative to landfill. They've got an incinerator project down there, and I'm hoping to get out there and check that out, so. That's, everything changes, you know, as we move down the road. So I think that's going to be the next, next big thing on solid waste.
Yeah, we keep hearing, and you know, that something like that's coming. I'm glad that you're going to get to see that. There's a facility that we desperately need to go look at and next door in Subirival County that they do a similar program, and we've talked about that for years, and it's something that we need to address later.
Yeah, it's not that far to go look at either. I think in the future, we're going to dig up our landfills and burn that, because it'll be energy.
Yeah, we'll be digging it back up. Be digging it all back up to burn it again?
Yeah, convert it into energy, and why have that there? I might be wrong, but anyway. Store it up like squirrels.
Squirrels always looking out for the next generation. See those trees coming up?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Brandon.
And also, part of that motion too is I need to make sure that Mr. Morehead has the ability to sign that MOU as well, too, please.
Got it, okay, there, everybody?
Yep, amend that motion.
Second. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, again.
Thanks, Brandon.
Hey, just wanted to comment there, Kevin. I would like for David to line something up. I'd like to go down and visit the one in Pigeon Forge myself.
Brandon, say that again.
I was just saying that I liked what David said there. I would like to go down to the Pigeon Forge facility and visit that sometime myself, so I'd like for us to get that lined up for sure.
Yeah, he's talking about the Pigeon Forge facility. They actually burn it over there, because, you know, you can imagine the trash that they have in Pigeon Forge and Subirival in that county. Okay, so we approved that, right? Okay, our next item, our next order of business is appointments. And the first one of the appointments is to reappoint the Haywood County Tax Assessor. So I need to, do I need to do a motion to approve Judy Hickman as the tax assessor, and then have her come up and be sworn in? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve Judy Hickman as our tax assessor.
I'll make that motion if she's willing to do it. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, come on up, Judy, and Sherry's going to administer an oath. Sherry, I appreciate you being here this morning to do this.
She had to come a long way to...
Yeah, I know, she did.
Up here to swear her in. Big walk she had to make.
Okay, Judy. I do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as tax assessor of the County of Haywood, North Carolina, and that I will not allow my actions as tax assessor to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God. All right.
Thank you, Judy. Appreciate you doing this. Our next order, our next item of appointments is the Haywood County Greenway Master Plan Selection Committee. David, go ahead.
Hopefully, it's the last time today, right? So the, part of the feasibility study that we addressed earlier in the meeting is there'll be a selection committee to select the vendor who will conduct that feasibility study. So I have a recommendation of Eric Romanician, Elizabeth Teague, Ian Smith, Nathan Clark, and Nick Schur from the town of Canton, and Martha Mills, who serves on our Haywood County Farm Preservation Committee. I'd recommend those six individuals to be, to review the RFPs when they come in, please. And I will serve as administrative, but with Elizabeth there, I don't have to do as much as I normally would have, so. But I'll serve anything that they need there as well. But I will not be on the selection committee, but I'll just serve in administrative capacity.
So our cover page here will be amended to add Martha Mills from the Farm and Land Preservation Committee.
Please, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, did you want to say anything, Tom?
No, I'm good. I'll make a motion. We accept these, these folks to serve on this committee.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more business before the board? If I was wearing a mask, I can't. Okay. Okay, here and then, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn?
So moved.
Brandon wants to adjourn. I've been there. Second. Second.
He finally got in there, didn't he?
All those in favor, say aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe out there. Thanks for joining us, Brandon.
You're welcome. Have a good night.